Any changes in the agenda?
Just not to the actual agenda itself, but the amendment to the purchase agreement there. There's a clause in there that was added that indicates that the seller pays per rata and after that they pay for everything, of course. So we didn't have that clause in there. That outlines that's the only change to that one. And then the posting of the accountant position, I think, is the other thing here, too. Sooner we can get that going, the better it is. Nothing else.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
Did you get those, Sandy?
It was consumer retention and consumer retention.
Hey.
We love doing that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. So we have presentations, proclamations, and acknowledgements. Tonight, we have Representative Vogel here, and it looks like we've even got Senator Dreheim here, so we're lucky. So can you approach whichever order you guys want to go in?
Well, since this is my home crowd, I'll go first. And then we'll let the senator come up. We actually did this over at New Craig on Monday morning. We had a, it was actually a town hall meeting, and so we're somewhat rehearsed. Session, as you know, there was really, what I looked at is four major bills. Obviously, there was a lot of other stuff going on. There was a lot of bills signed and enacted, but I think the things that, you know, most of the public had focused on came down to four things. There's a tax bill which ended up being amended onto the education bill, and that one unfortunately got vetoed, and the difficulty we're going to face because of that is the nonconformity. In the past, our taxes were driven from taxable income off the federal court. The plan behind the tax bill was to drive them off of adjusted gross income because there was differences in the deductions, the itemized deductions, standard deduction, the exemptions, and so forth. Since that didn't happen, the Department of Revenue is probably sitting there right now pulling their hair out and having less of it than me because they're going to have to come up with forms that are almost impossible to design. So it's really yet to be decided how this is all going to work out. The other thing that really bothers them about that, of course, too, is the software companies because most tax preparers are dependent on software. We're one state out of 50, so it's one thing to design your software for the federal tax form, but now they come in and they have to design this convoluted thing for the state. So we'll see what happens there. The other really unfortunate thing with the tax bill was that we had provision in there, we had a bill in there to make a retroactive refund of the sales tax on the water treatment plant, estimated at probably $250,000, and that went down with the tax bill, which was really disheartening because we had worked on that. I shepherded that bill through the legislature for a couple of years and it finally made it in, and it was good that it finally made it in because I am deeply concerned to get it in next session. It's getting old, it's getting stale. This was still the same session because we worked it pretty hard in '17, and it didn't quite make it. We got it in there in '18, so whether we can go back and revisit that, but that's significant, and that was really, that was really a disappointment, especially for myself and the city, working with people to try to get that in there. A quarter of a million dollars, a lot of money. The other bill that got vetoed was a supplemental bill, and unfortunately, that was one of those bills that turned into like eight or 900 pages. And I know people get disgusted with that if you want to say you shouldn't do that. I may agree, but it doesn't really matter because I'm not in a position to really track what's going to happen. There was a lot of good things in there as well, but that got vetoed. Good news is that there was two bills that did get signed. The first was the bonding bill, which I actually did vote for in the end. I am really hesitant. One of the questions that came up at New Craig was why I didn't sign on the bill for the mental health center in Savage. And I had made up my mind going into the session that I wasn't going to co-author on any bonding bills because I wasn't so sure I could vote for it because I'm really getting concerned that a lot of that mistake is taking on. In the end, I looked at it, and there's stuff in there that I probably would rather not have in there, but there was a lot of good stuff in there, too. There was a lot of money for water treatment, necessary repairs for educational institutions. So that did get passed. One of the things that was in that bonding bill was to create a commission on the oversight of the Legislative Budget Office. And, you know, these bills do get kind of large, and sometimes, you know, these things get put in there. This was necessary, in fact, today, the reason I got my white shirt on, we had our first meeting. So what we're doing is we're forming a Legislative Budget Office in Minnesota before the fiscal notes, which were the assumptions that were put into place, financial assumptions for a bill, came from the Office of Management and Budget, the executive branch. So what you really had was the executive branch writing up bill estimates, and then the legislature over here, the one that appropriated money off of somebody else's estimate. And it was decided a few years ago that we should have our own Legislative Budget Office. So I actually was able to carry that bill. It got enacted as a task force the first time, and now this time, they actually are able to turn it into an actual commission. So we actually have that thing up and going. Had a first meeting today, it went fairly well. The other bill that did get signed was the pension bill and relates to the city relative to PERA. In fact, I was just meeting today with pension people, the staff, because I have a rough time understanding how all of this stuff works, and I've got a financial background. I still have a rough time, and I was meeting with them today to just see because there's so many different stories on how underfunded we are, and we probably will never know because a lot of it has to do with the rate of return that you assume is going to happen in the future. But this was a good compromise bill because what it did was it lowered a lot of the colas, and that was, that was really, I don't know, nice, I guess I could say, of the people that are covered under the pension because this became a real big pain because we're contractually liable for the pensions that are due. But everybody around the table knew that there was issues with the solvency of this thing long term, and they came to the table and they negotiated, and actually, there was about a three to one give from the employees under the pensions as far as colas relative to the dollar amounts, and then the ongoing of the state contributions. It was about $27 million this year, but it'll fully load out to well over $100 million for the biennium that the state will have to make in additional contributions. So by the time it gets fully implemented, that in 2024. You know, I could go into a lot of other stuff, but I'm sure the senator could have some things to add as well, and maybe if you'd be okay with it, you know, he could chat with you about a few of his things, and then we could just take questions. So I believe that's okay, whatever your pleasure.
That's fine.
That's good.
Okay. You're the senior.
Thank you for the invite, by the way. I appreciate it. So I think Representative Vogel covered, you know, the big picture stuff. The Oversight Committee that's really involved in overseeing is so important, and I don't think the average person understands why it's so important. I had a bill this year on teenage pregnancy transportation, really glamorous stuff, right? But there was a gap in how the state reimburs the local school districts on pregnant teens. And, you know, my personal belief is that if we can get these young ladies into a program where they have a higher-than-average chance of graduating, so graduation rate is 85% through a special program, without it, it's 50%. And most of the school districts are already driving towards one of these programs anyway, but they were being penalized by the state for the funding for that same van or bus going to the metro through all these programs, most of the programs tend to be in the metro. So they came up with a fiscal though, because they didn't like my bill. It was $1.7 million for one year for this transportation for 200 young ladies approximately. When all the crying was done and the negotiating, it was $40,000. But that's how you stop a bill, and that's why Representative Vogel's bill is so important is because, to me, it's about solving solutions and identifying a problem, come up with some ideas, and more times than not, they need the state's help for funding or clarification on statute. So this office that Representative Vogel's spearheading, more or less, on the House side, should help both parties in the legislature get real numbers to move bills forward. So that's very important, so I thank him for his work ethic. The bonding, bonding. So if you look at bonding, we all love bonding when it comes in our own neighborhood, but it's getting so expensive. Our debt service on the bonding is getting higher than what we bond for every year, so we're borrowing more than what we're reinvesting. And my main issue with the bonding bill was that we needed to keep it for basic infrastructure, especially for small towns under 5,000. So sewer, water, wastewater treatment plants, and of course, roads and bridges. And I think we did, we did some of that, it wasn't quite as much, I think it was around 10%.
I think it was about 100 million.
Yeah. So, pretty good, and I'm happy with that. Mental health was also in there, which I think is real important for what it's costing the local counties for mental health. So they have the option to partner with the state, to open up their own regional centers if they choose. The population shift that's coming, so what we do at the state is a lot of times, we have to react to the feds. So the federal government will make some changes, like the tax law, because we had just did a huge tax bill, and then we have to react, and unfortunately, then we push it down into you guys and the counties, and then you have to react to what we do. So I apologize for that, but that's just the way it works. But the population shift is really going to affect how, I believe, the federal government handles things and the state government handles things, and I don't think most of us are ready for it. And you look around the room, putting me, we're all getting a little older, closer to retirement, almost everybody. There's a few of the younger ones here. And why that, no big deal, we're just getting older, we're going to retire. But we'll have a statistical deficit of people entering the workforce. So we already have a hard time finding employees to fill jobs, but we'll have a statistical deficit of people entering the workforce. I don't think people realize what that'll do. So it'll mean less income tax that we'll collect as well, less people working. They'll spend less, so we'll have less sales tax, and then property taxes will probably contract in most areas. I think you'll be fortunate here because of your location, but I think in a lot of areas that will contract, and of course, that funds our local stuff, like our schools and our local roads. So for me, I think we need to, I would rather see the state plan ahead and maybe be a little more responsible and a little more transparent on how we're collecting money and how we're spending money to get ready for that shift so we can prioritize. So just like you guys, you have to prioritize, there are a lot of nice projects you'd love to do, but you're handcuffed because of limited resources. Same thing at the state side, so we have to prioritize. But I think we have to have the right data and the right numbers to do that, and that's what I think, I know I spent a lot of time on it, I think Representative Vogel was the same, but I'll be quiet, I know it's late, and I know you guys are probably just getting started, but I'll sit down and answer questions. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions?
Any wish lists?
New interchange.
No, I mean, you know, I'll make a comment on the oversight of the fiscal note process. I mean, just for clarification purposes, I think it's not a very simple process, just in general. Having worked for a state agency, I understand the games that go on as well. So we get a fiscal note request two hours before hearing, and then something changes from one of the staff people that says, okay, now we're going to add this and that. So I mean, there's games all around, so I think it'll be good for the Senate and the House staff to actually have to do some of the work perhaps, because you don't want to under-
You have to explain it.
Yeah, and yeah, because you don't want to underestimate as a state agency because then we come back in two years and say we were completely off on our assumptions, now we're asking for more money. On the flip side, you don't want to overestimate and then come back down to 40,000, which is the true value or whatever. But I mean, I think that, I mean, it's the games that you're going to play on either side of it, so I think it'll be good to have a better look at it all, but I mean, it's just, it's an interesting process.
I think the key is a structure. From a businessperson's standpoint, I wouldn't want somebody else writing the cost estimate for a project that I'm going to be doing, and I think that's where I look at this is, that's why this is important. It isn't that the agencies aren't cooperating or can't, but when you have the executive branch writing an estimate for the legislative branch who's going to have to appropriate the money and rely on that estimate, if there's any, you know, subjectivity there that could go one way or another, it might go the other way. And I think that's the big thing here, and the credibility that comes with that. This is a bipartisan committee. There are eight members on it, four from the House, four from the Senate, two Republicans and two Democrats on each side. So this isn't one of those things where, in fact, it was interesting, after the committee meeting, I was talking to one of the DFL House members on the committee, and she says, you know, this was different because we had so much discussion, and I said, yeah, isn't that nice, we come into a committee and you don't know who's going to win? And, you know, because it is balanced, and there's going to have to be consensus, and I think that's one of the nice things with the way these things in the office or legislative auditor are set up, they provide credibility. And there could be an impact here because they'll also be looking at doing what are called local impact notes. We don't have a lot of them, but when there is legislation that would have a cost to local, whether it's county or first or cities, they do local impact notes. So fiscal notes and local impact notes will be done by this, so.
And I look at it, it'll help us write better bills because we will have more detail and be more involved in the cost structure. So I think in the long run, it will be a conscious step.
Are they going to look at on this at all the economic benefit from some of the bills that you pass or some of the projects that you put out? I mean-
You know, we had discussions because the conversation has been, okay, you only have to do fiscal notes when we're in session. What are you going to do with the rest of the time? I'd not wanted to get into that discussion. It was, we spent two hours and 20 minutes on a two-hour meeting today. So it was, there's enough to cover with just all of the conversation that goes on, but as the meeting, you know, as this thing gets situated, the first thing, the most important thing is for it to establish credibility. You want to know that what the information you're getting is unbiased and accurate. But I do think as this thing goes on, since it's a legislative commission, the legislative commission, whoever they are going into the future, can look at this and say, how can it help? Because I do think when it comes to fiscal, I'd love to see how some of these fiscal notes play out. Go back two or three years with legislation.
Compared to reality, yeah.
Compare the fiscal note to the actual and see. Because one of my fears is always that the fiscal note is overstated, but the bill costs what the fiscal note said. Could it have been done more efficiently? So I think that, you know.
Well, and I think to that point, too, I think it'll, because DHS and others won't speculate on any savings whatsoever. I mean, they'll never go down that path, and that's very frustrating. As a licensed provider, one that's providing home care, assisted living service, I mean, we can show how it actually saved money for somebody getting home and community-based services in a less structured setting, but they'll never realize any of that, or at least put it on paper or even say in public what that actually is, so hopefully, this can get at some of that.
And I think that's some of the value that people are, we can have them asking good questions.
That brings up an interesting issue. There is a proposed bill coming that would mandate some DHS employees to spend time in the field. So spend 60 hours a year actually in the houses, in the centers, and get more hands-on experience on what it's really like. So it'll be interesting to see.
We've talked about that, so I'm a member of leading age and the imperative and stuff, too. I mean, have a surveyor come out for the day, a week, and then on the flip side, I'd love for some of my staff to see what it's like to actually be a surveyor and get that collaborative spirit because, I mean, there's none of that.
To work together.
Right.
And it's a kind of role. So, you know, I think there's a lot of things like that that we are working on, trying to be more transparent and try to solve until it's resolved.
I have a question on the sales tax piece of the water treatment center. How far, how far retroactive would that sales tax have been?
Mark could probably speak to it a little more. I think it was around 2014 or 15.
Yeah, we've been trying about, this will be our third, I think it's more like our fourth year doing it.
So if it comes back around next year, are we kind of missing our window?
That's why, this was our opportunity because I did get it in there last in '17. They put it in there in '18 because it was the end of the biennium, and I think they wanted, you know, I made up, I let them know that it was important. So I think it was, okay, let's get it in there. And it survived all the way through conference committee. I mean, it actually made it to the end. So that's the problem with stuff like this is that obviously, there's a lot of requests, and maybe it's a little bit of waiting your turn because you put it in and there's other people that are asking. And this is a legitimate thing. This wasn't a give. The problem was, of course, we had to basically prematurely build a water treatment plan, and there's been legislation since, I believe, that has cleared that up, I think, where you wouldn't have had to pay the sales tax. So this wasn't something that was, you know, something special for us. But now it takes special legislation because the exemption didn't come until after we did it. So try again, but it just, like I said, the farther out it gets, the more difficult it gets. This was our golden opportunity and-
Both the league and metro cities advocate the sales tax exemption on those kinds of purchases, and if it ever goes through, hopefully, it'll be retroactive a little bit so that we can maybe pick up the funding, but yeah.
My idea on those type of projects is to run it like a PO system. So if the contractor gets a special number from the state, like a tax ID number, but it's just for this project, and then anything he buys for that project would be taxed.
Right.
I think that's something that could easily be done, and it would be easy, or not easy, but you could track it.
Right.
And then maybe have some recording on it. But I think it's silly that we have to now waste our time, but devote time to this, but it shouldn't be an issue, so.
And the only reason I mention this is that both of those pieces were all side-by-side as we went along, and if ours had passed, we'd be there, but if the other one had passed, we'd probably have an opportunity to do it the other way. So good luck with doing that.
One thing I'll bring up that I, you know, I had emailed Tom, not something that I probably want to bring up, but you guys want to hear about is the, you know, I have a bill in that's to bring more transparency to franchise fees, which hasn't been accepted by the biggest cities. But I'll bring it up because I'm here, and I want you to know why I did this, because you could, right now legally, from what I understand, you could put in place a franchise fee without a public hearing. That's my understanding.
And cities have.
You don't need a public hearing, legally, not that you would, but you could. Now, once you put that franchise fee in place, it's there for perpetuity, right? Until it goes away either by the time that, by what you did in your action or you, or some sense or whatever, okay? But let's say it sits there for 10 years. You put in place a tax on your taxpayers for time certain that will never be heard by truth and taxation, right? Because it's a franchise fee, it's not a tax. And my feeling was that if this is going to happen, that first and foremost, it's got to be mandated that you need a public hearing. Secondly, that people should have some feedback mechanism because they're not going to get their bite at the apple at truth and taxation because it's not going to be there. So therefore, if indeed, and I loosen this because I started off at 5% and I went to 10%, if 10% of the voters signed a petition, it could be put on the ballot at the next election as to whether or not this was with a disclosure of what it was. So it doesn't preclude the city from doing it, it's just that you would have to wait, put it on the ballot, and let the voters decide because they're never going, they're never going to get another chance at it until it expires. So, and I know the league hates it because it's an infringement on local control. I'll give you another example, though, of what they look at local control. I'm also on the Pension Commission. Plymouth Fire Department, Plymouth is looking at going from a volunteer to a paid fire department, okay? They have, I believe it was, their retirement is $7,500 a year, but they probably could have, they've got enough cash sitting there for $11,000 or $12,000. They don't want to raise it because there's a few firefighters that are yet to retire, and if it's $7,500, maybe this excess would then be available for pension benefits for the full-timers, right? My feeling is that that was state aid that was paid for that, those firefighters, when they were active, that came into the city, and that money should be to them, but you know you have control over how much the firefighters get. You get the state aid, and they have, generally, the city here has been good about it, in fact, contributes for them. Not all cities are doing it. A person is testifying at the Pension Commission, and she says, you know, her only excuse for doing this was you're usurping our local control, which rubbed my ire up because I've been a firefighter, and basically, you know, I took offense to that and let her know that in a presentable way. But what you have to look at here is when this argument of local control comes, look at what the issue is behind it, because I don't really think that this issue that I'm promoting with this franchise fee transparency is going to hurt local control. It might hurt the opportunity to quickly pass a franchise fee, but your taxpayers should have the right to do this because the taxpayers don't even look at a franchise fee as a tax because they see it on their electric bill. So let's explain it to them and do it that way. So I bring it up because Tom asked me to address it, and, well, if he asks me to, I will.
I've got one question about that is, and the way they're talking about this bill at the league is basically that the cities will pass the bill, then if they get the petition to, for the recall on it, you could have the franchise fee in place and have the money earmarked for something, and then, so what you're saying is that-
There was a reverse referendum language on the Senate side. I don't know.
Yeah, so, so then you'd lose it and have to-
But there was a process in place, and it wasn't really easy to do, so I, there is the possibility that that would happen, but, you know, it's not like they can just say, hey, we don't want it. You know, all it did was clarify a process to form it, the fee, and for citizens to have a process to eliminate the fee.
So that sounds better than what, the way they're trying to explain.
Well, the way they were explaining is, yeah, you could go ahead and spend the money before you were legally entitled to get it. I don't think that, you, you're a pretty prudent city council, I don't think you would do that, but you could say, look, we're going to start spending the money even though we know there might be a reverse referendum in November that canceled it. My sense would be that if you were going to have the reverse referendum, you'd probably wait until after November to institute the franchise fee because then you would know what your voters and your taxpayers think. I mean, this, and that's, I know that the league has, and I've talked to them, we've had nice friendly conversations. In fact, in one of the conversations, that was the reason I changed the 5% to 10%, because I said, look, I'm trying to beat you guys on this, but I also won't give up on the reverse referendum because that's the only taxpayer- reverse referendum. Because that's the only taxpayer, that's the only taxpayer protection here. Because it doesn't come to proof and taxation ever. Not that you get a lot of people coming, but it never gets anyplace, and it stays forever. It doesn't, so, yeah.
If that comes up this year, I may, at the committee meeting, I may just ask, well, let's have the offer of the bill come and actually explain it.
Well, that'd be fun. But that's precisely what we need. We get all these silly lobbyists, these trade associations, and I'm a member of Leading Age. So I mean, I understand their role and their purpose. But they're flipping lobbyists, and they spin it to, but there's a purpose and I get it. But take all that out of it, the local control thing, I mean, there are some local control issues, minimum wage, that are just plain stupid. And there, it needs to be dealt with at the state level. And I'm sitting here at a city council talking about, but that is exact, we don't need a bunch of patchwork stuff going across the state, especially for some big issues that are clearly not thought out well, that are done for good intentions, but have serious consequences when you think about it. And when you have Minneapolis and St. Paul starting to roll this out, then it's going to go up to Rochester, or down to Rochester, up to Duluth, and boom, it's going to be across the state. And before you know it, I mean, then the consequences are going to be real, and people are going to get hurt. And then it's going to have to be fixed. And then people are going to say, well, why did you step in and why didn't you help? So...
Yeah, that one really bothered me from the standpoint of how you administer a payroll. It's absurd. Just the idea of the possibility. So, and he had also mentioned something about the state forecast, which won't come out till November. I'm usually pretty good at numbers. I think we're around $350 million over forecast for the 23rd end of the biennium. Seems to me it was 350.
We have a, we have a couple weeks, so we'll...
I got a piece on yesterday. But in any case, we had a significant, what I look at as a fairly significant over budget, over forecast on revenue.
So the missing piece to that equation, in my opinion, is the fire and the quantity prices, and the yield's not looking as good as they have in past years. The yields have carried us the last few years, and we're not going to have that this year, don't they? With all the drawn-out spots and sending the yields. So that would be interesting to see how that trickles out.
What will be the effect of the recent internet sales tax ruling on all these numbers here? I mean, will you be able then to make up the LGA deficit and that kind of thing?
Well, I don't think, there's nothing, you know, there's nothing legislated on the sales tax.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So we'll have the option to tax. I, you know, I don't think my side or our side aisle has much stomach for more taxes, especially with surpluses lately. You know, it's hard to get people to the table to adjust that formula.
Right.
So, I was on property tax division the first term. And, you know, the LGA is obviously very contentious thing.
So we don't touch it.
You know, there was, but that being said, there wasn't, LGA, what was it, 15 or 20 million of additional LGA in the tax bill that got vetoed. So there was, so generally, I think because it is a contentious thing and it's a compromise thing, that there's some, I guess if I were budgeting from a city standpoint, I'd probably be more inclined to use it for capital things than ongoing operation things. Because it could go away. And fiscal disparities was on his thing too. And, you know, that's another one.
Can I jump in on that a little bit?
Yeah.
So I think, on the senate side at least, we really tried to equalize some of the state programs. That one big project in the metro eats up all of that money, or three quarters of it, and the rest of the state has to divvy up the last quarter of it. So we're trying to include, like, cities under 5,000 in a special pool, or a special percentage on a lot of these programs. So it all isn't eaten up by Minneapolis, St. Paul, Rochester, Duluth, and I'll form an K-100 too. So it's 5% cloud, 5 or 6 communities. So we are trying to adjust a whole bunch of different programs so that it is spread out throughout the whole state more evenly than I think it has been in the past.
And Rich brings up a good point, too, that I'm sure you're aware of as you should really start looking at it. Elka New Market's going to go over 5,000 relatively soon. A big difference in your road aid and other things that are going to happen, and you've probably been prepared for that, though, I'm not telling you anything to do. But this has been on my mind as well as I've watched for the small city. Because, you know, Elka New Market's right at the top of the list for the amount of money that's being received under the small city program that came out, is that last year's transportation bill? So, you know...
First transportation bill in 10 years.
So, but there was money that's been coming to Elka New Market, and I forget again what the exact amount was. But I know, I looked through the cities and it was close to the top.
And there has been discussion of moving some of that from 5 to 10, or some people want it to 15,000. So we'll see where that goes.
Yeah.
Yeah. 5,500. You've got more.
You're going to get more at 5,000 than you will at 4,990.
Yeah, you'll get more at 5,001 than you will at 4,990.
So a simple question before you guys go. Surplus is deficit. Will you guys, and I'd say this to Democrats sitting up here too, just get along and get something done? I mean, that is the most frustrating thing. We go into these hearings, I mean, I take time to go testify, and I already know what the vote's going to be depending on the number of people sitting there on either side of the aisle. And I, it's, the process itself needs to be...
The committees I serve on aren't too heated. You know, I think the senate's a little different environment than the house. And...
They're more mature.
The thoughtful lobby.
Less of them, that's all.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah. But, you know, I truly believe that, you know, I know higher ed, which I'm probably the most involved in, is very, not that we always agree, but we really try to include the Democrats and Republicans in the discussion. And I believe Senator Fishbach or Chair Fishbach went farther than I would have gone to try to bring them into the discussion on a lot of different things. On the agriculture, housing, rural development, jobs, economic development, all that kind of stuff that I do with. It's, you have the prevailing wages and things like that that are hot button issues. But I would say 99% of what we talk about isn't heated. I think it's a little different in the house. You know, they have more of a majority, and they have more people and have more personalities.
And we're elected every two years. And seriously, when you're elected every two years, you've got to realize all the positioning that's going on.
All the speeches.
Because there's one thing you don't want to be is the minority. So if you're the minority, you want to make the majority look bad. And if you are the majority, of course, you want to have the other opposite effect on the minority so that they don't get to be the majority. If the camera wasn't in the corner, you probably wouldn't see the, sometimes the rhetoric that goes on. So...
And you see people give speeches against how bad it is, the bill is, and then they go and vote for it. Because it's just for the camera. And then you got a whole string of people that get up and give the same speech. And it's disappointing. But we, I think, the 21 freshmen that came into the senate for both sides of the aisle, I would say 19 out of 21 are really trying, or maybe 18, are really trying to be solution-based and not so political. So...
I just want to thank you guys for the work you've done for our city and for this area and the state. And I think you're doing a great job.
You know, I appreciate you coming up all the time. And even if we don't always agree on everything, I need to hear from you guys.
Sometimes it's, sometimes the disagreement is just that we don't know the total story yet.
And you wouldn't know unless you come up and see, or call us, or email us, or have us come here. I mean, I'm always happy to come. I love you.
So do I.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Okay, we will move on to public comment. Commissioner Wolf.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good morning. I don't know what it is. Couple things. When it comes to those franchise fees over in Prior Lake, I knew people that paid $300 a year in those. And that may not sound like a big deal, but you can't deduct those off your income taxes if you itemize. So that 300 actually costs you 375. Just, I don't know if that's over somebody's pay grade. But the, last month or a couple months ago, maybe I talked about the federal tax plan that was put out there. And if Minnesota doesn't get that together, you know, someone said, how much is it going to cost? It'll cost Minnesotans $813 million in extra taxes that would cost us. Plus, the extra accounting fees for, you know, accountants wherever you go for that. So County Road 2, that, you know, from 27 out to, I think it's 23, is mostly done out there. I don't know if they have the stripes on it there yet. The roundabout on 46 and 86 is under construction. Don't try to go through, because if they catch you, they're going to ticket you. And they've gotten a few so far. There's a few races going on here on August 14. So I think that's probably, well, maybe not before the next time that you guys meet. But so in Scott County, there's a sheriff's race, there's four, there's a primary. And so, not endorsing anybody, but get out and vote, make your voice heard. Our county administrator, Gary Shelton, has decided to retire on the 1st of January. So we're going to go, and this next Tuesday, we're going to start the process of filling that spot and hopefully having somebody in there by, I'm hoping, November, so that they can get acclimated before they lose the guy that has the vault of information. So that would be, that would be the best. So other than that, that's all I have tonight. So I think it stopped raining. I'm going to try to get out to Spring Lake and hopefully see. But I'm glad about the rain. We needed some rain. So anyhow, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? Going once, twice, three times? Public comment is closed. Consent agenda. We've already heard about the changes, so. Motion to approve the amended consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. No public hearings, no general business. Reports?
Administration? Just one, I wanted to update you a little bit on the solar project. We, as you may recall, we found out that City Hall can't handle the load to use solar for the entire City Hall. So we'll have to go back and apply. It will handle one set of solar panels, and so we'll get half the benefit. What we did was, we took the allocation for here, which was 40 megawatts, and we moved it over to the waste, or excuse me, the water treatment facility. And we just got that approved to make that transfer. They don't often do that, but we moved it over there. So we'll see another contract here, maybe the 26th, but more likely the first meeting in August. It's basically the same thing, only with a different spot for it. Meanwhile, Public Works can hold the 40 megawatt. And so we have the next iteration of solar cells and panels is upon us since we started this process. So we'll actually end up with a better result by waiting. We've ordered the panels, and they're due in anywhere between eight and 10 weeks. And then we'll put them on and hook up, and we'll be ready to go for that one. And, or hopefully, we can do the same thing here before the end of the year for the waste, for the water treatment facility as well too. So, numbers look good and on track. But, you know, like everything else, it, we made that exchange, plea for exchange here about two, two and a half months ago. It just took that long to get through the process. But we're through it, and now we've got a direction there. So anyway, just want to let you know that. That's all I have from here.
Any questions? Public Works, any questions on that? Police, no report. Fire, no report. Engineering? It's better than Rich. Community development, no report. Anything on parks?
No, we, as I said, we canceled it tonight because of the weather here. And that's why you saw me running around, or the police make sure people get out of there really well. Thanks to the police department for helping us get that done. I guess it got on us faster than we thought. I got no warning, let's put it that way. Other than that, we've already started the, we're starting the repurposing of Rowena Pond. You can see, we're starting to move some of the playground, what do I want to say, the border, and some of the wood chips out of there so we can slide it over. And then, you know, hopefully we'll be able to move the playground, or the ball field down. And then we get, and then next year, we'll have the combination hockey rink and basketball court over there as well too. It'll be lighted as well too. And our engineers are helping with all that as well too. So those two things are underway there as well. And also on August 7, last thing is that the Parks Mission the other night voted to do a little ribbon cutting at the skate park as we usually do for national, or for night to night. So we'll have, we'll do that, invite council here shortly. And then we'll have something cool to eat as well too, over there as well. So that's what, that's what we're up to. That's all, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
You said the ribbon cutting will be on night to night?
Yeah, it'll be 5:30. We do that traditionally, and then you guys can get out of there and go with Dazzling Dave and learn some more yo-yo tricks.
Okay, then on to other committee reports. Scale doesn't meet in July, so we go to MVTA, which we already hit. The only thing that, it's the end of the month, but there will be a partnership committee meeting next, a week from Friday. So that'll, I'll be attending that, since I'm on that committee. I, 35 solutions?
The only thing that really happened today was a presentation that I've asked Sandy to scan and distribute. So you'll be getting that in the next week or so. I don't want to put any pressure on her.
It's no hurry because of...
Right, yeah. It's no hurry. But it was some interesting stuff. That was the big thing.
Chamber of Commerce, any reports?
No, I wasn't at the booth, so I don't know.
We're getting the breakfast set up. Looks like it'll be the 26th at 7:30.
Okay, you're going to have to, like I said, I haven't been to meetings, so breakfast...
I think that's...
State of the City, that's September?
Yeah, yeah.
We just confirmed with Peter to do the same community report.
Okay.
So I sent the stuff over to Rick, and he's putting together something. You should see it a couple.
Okay.
By figure, I'd mention it anyway, so you can have it down.
All right.
So you get to get up early. And it's a council meeting night, you go home late.
That's okay. All right.
Yeah. That's the only day you could make it.
All right.
Regional Council of Mayors, we had a meeting, and it was basically about, a lot about housing and housing trends, and that lots are getting smaller all over the Twin Cities. Twin Cities is in better shape than most of their competitors for housing. But if we don't do something pretty soon, we'll be in the same shape as the others where the housing prices will go skyrocket. And it's going to make it very hard to live in the Twin Cities. So we've got an opportunity for a few years to get things started. And the areas that actually do something and get some affordable housing built and that will probably really benefit from having, from doing something. Those that are sitting and waiting, it's going to be a tough time. CCEC?
No report.
No report. Downtown Improvement?
No meeting.
And I did notice, I don't know if anybody else has, they put the wall in.
They put the wall in, they put the pad down for the lion's bench to go down on top of that. So...
Okay. 50 by 30 collective impact. Steering Committee met. It's just the usual, nothing too much new, except they're working on their work plans and trying to get... on their work plans and trying to get all the groups working together. And then on Wednesday, we, that was on Tuesday, on Wednesday, we had the Transportation Committee meeting, and we worked on the work plan, and we're still working, I'm still working on the project to get a auto repair program set up in the Elko New Market area, and I've met with Bethany twice to get something set up there, and then the housing didn't meet, which was kind of funny, because.
You showed up anyway.
Well, I was there, Bob Coughlin was there, and so was Jake.
It was kind of a last minute cancellation.
So, so the, some of the people that were in the upper echelons of the group didn't hear about it. But the Workforce Committee met.
Yeah, so, biggest thing that's happening in the workforce, I think I said this last time, was they're really starting to hone in and focus on actually doing actions, you know, we've had, been a couple of years of gathering data, and the feeling is we've, we've got enough of that, it's time to move forward with some initiatives, and so what we were presented with, from the support staff, was basically the, what they thought were the four top key initiatives to really look at, and they had some potential, you know, action items listed under that, just as guides, not as, that this is what you have to do. And the goal then is to get one, the top one started in the next month or so, and do a smaller group that'll meet, and just have the larger group meeting quarterly. And then they want to have the second initiative started by the end of the year, so by the end of the year, they want to have two rolling. One of the, the major focuses, I think, the first one they're going to, one of the first ones they're looking at is really, do we as a, does the county, or, do we want to have a job board that really drives to our community, not actually linked to the government, because, you know, the feeling is from the focus group that it would be better if it was more of a, more friendly site, less government-y, and also have not just job information out there, but also have event information and some other things to just provide a source for the community to understand, you know, what's really available in our community, from employment to transportation, to housing, to, I mean, I, I don't know what the, what this website in theory would look like, but one of the key things is for jobs, obviously, this is workforce readiness, so. They were, we had the presentation with Monster, and that was looking to be like sixty grand per year, and there's not funds for that, and so it's, but that's what this committee's going to have to look into, is what are the options, what can we do within fiscally responsible budgets, et cetera, so. Action's going to start happening, which is awesome after two years, so.
Do we, do we think it's solving anything by doing something like that? I mean, I'll Google jobs, I'll go on Indeed or different places. I mean, if you have it in another place, be helpful at all?
The focus group said yes, the employers said yes, where, where, because it would be geographically specific, in theory, and so it's, it's a different way to target, and the, the goal is the way it would be promoted, advertised, whatever word you want to use, would be targeting, targeting the citizens, getting the information into schools and places where, you know, maybe, maybe it's not. And having features that assist you in the process, I mean, not everybody knows how to go out necessarily and look for a job, or what's the best site to use? The, the idea behind this is, this is your one-stop shop. You come here, we do your personality profile, where it, it will help guide you on based on the way you answer the questions, what, what are the career paths that suit your personality, as suggestions, and, and kind of holistically guide you in living, earning, learning in Scott County.
It just doesn't sound like a millennial type way of doing it. I mean, I would never go to somewhere like that. I mean, is it a bunch of older individuals on these groups?
The focus group was not, it was actually predominantly.
Really? It just doesn't seem like something that.
The, the suggestions for this basically came from men camps and younger people, behind us.
But, so, you know, ultimately, this group is going to have to determine, is it feasible? Does it make sense? Is it worth the, is the benefit worth the cost? Are we going to reach the right people? Is it, so that's all what this team ultimately is going to have to decide. That, I mean, information, data has been gathered from so many different cuts and slices and sources and. The data that's been called is from state sites, county sites, focus groups, surveys of youths in, in school, you know, there's just, we have tried to gather data in any and every method we could think of to, to capture, you know, what, what does a millennial think, I mean.
And younger.
It'd be interesting to take it to like the Governor's Workforce Development Board, one of their quarterly meetings, and present it, where you have all the people from the different colleges and.
Right.
And whatever, they're not just our area, so that we're not trying to do something in a silo that.
Well, and so, we did have, we do have representation, so one of the other things to focus on, one of the other initiatives that they want to look at is getting more secondary education in Scott County, right? That's one of the things that came up over and over and over, was, you know, if you want to have secondary education here, you have to go somewhere else, really. So, so we've been talking to Dakota County Technical College, we've been talking to, actually, one of the members on, of the group is actually a, an educational, like, not just for Scott County, he is, he's in the college, you know, second, post-secondary education.
He's with Minskew.
Minskew, thank you, I couldn't come up with that. So, so we've got representation from a broader audience than just Scott County, but time's going to tell. It's, but we need to start moving something. I mean, you, you can't just continue to gather data, so. It either's going to work, or it's not. It's time to, it's time to.
Do it and try it.
Yeah, it's time to make some decisions, and, so, that's it.
Any other questions on fifty by thirty? Going to keep it short tonight on that. Discussion by council.
So, am I supposed to do my announcement? Yeah, so I have officially tendered my resignation, effective July thirtieth.
Sorry to see you go, you've been, you've been a steady.
Get some different housing here, and I could stay. I can't wait.
I can tell you, the, the Plant, Planning Commission just looked at the last ten acre lot of it.
Yeah, I know, I know stuff's coming.
They, they turned down fifty-foot lots.
Fifty foot's a little.
Well, fifty's a little small, but I think the developer was, is, is looking for sixty, but we're going to have to.
I thought we said seventy.
It's not for all the houses in the development either, it's going to be more of a mixed development, you know, with some, some of the lots being sixty and some being seventy, and then the doors down by the Rowena Pond being probably eighty-five, but.
Trish, I've said, you know, a number of times.
Don't make that up.
I'm going to try.
I'm already doing it.
I, you know, when we, when we had interviewed you, and it was not an easy choice necessarily, but, I mean, it's probably, my favorite vote is.
Three years ago.
Yeah, voting to a point, yeah. You've just done a great job, and you're going to be sorely missed.
Thank you.
And I'm going to cry when I leave, I'm just not going to do it here.
I, I'm emotional, we all know that.
You will be here at the next meeting, I think?
I will be at the next meeting, you, you, tonight was just the announcement, at next meeting, Tom is going to do his best to actually be here, there, you guys will have to make decisions on exactly what you do and how you act on this information, so that he'll have information in the packet and stuff.
I think with over two years left on your term, I think we have to have a little special election.
You'll talk about it, you'll get the information and, correct, and discuss it next time.
Well, Stacey Troy working with you as well, and I was going to tell you tonight that we had just put in the order for the street light down there, so hopefully it will be.
I can, I can come visit my street light.
Mission accomplished.
Check.
Should we put a little?
The other, actually, the other thing I would love to see come to fruition is the little libraries.
Yeah.
Like, I, like, I would love to see those on their posts and in.
We'll put them up before you leave.
Good.
We should put a little plaque on that light.
Yeah, right.
It's a Trish Timmons.
The Trish Timmons memorial light.
It can't be a memorial.
No, because that would mean a dag.
It would be horrible, we can't do that.
Let's not kill you.
Well, it's killing her when she leaves, can't you see?
It's killing all of us.
I still got to see her.
I'm sorry.
I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that just because she's moving doesn't mean she's not going to stop and say hi.
That's your problem, you know.
You may move back. Well, so honestly, honestly, there are no rental town homes in Elko New Market, let's just.
Three more months.
I don't have that amount of time, so, well, maybe I do, who knows?
You might.
We'll see.
Stranger things have happened, I might wind up still in Elko New Market, and if that's the case, maybe I can run for council, like, you know, in two years, I don't know. Who knows? But for now, I don't know where I'm going to land, and so do, in all fairness, I need to let you guys move forward and fill the positions, so.
That's a tough decision, I'm sure.
Uh huh.
All right.
You also need to start thinking about all the committees and stuff, too.
All the what?
All the committees and other things, so.
Start thinking about what's.
But there's another person coming in, so in theory, they could just take them all on. I think that's a good idea. All right.
I want to see who's going to top that for a discussion by council.
Any other discussion by council, any other announcements or anything that's?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
There you go.
You're second?
No, it's, I seconded.
I didn't hear, okay.
She's very quiet.
Speak up louder, louder, louder.
She's crying on the end.
Second.
All in favor?